All right. Let's get the board meeting started. We'll do introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Joe Purvey, County Administrator. Vance Corney, County Council.
Annabelle Hameo, Commissioner.
Zan O'Drill, Commissioner.
Danielle Brown, Health Department.
All right, neither.
Alyssa Ash, Benton County PIO. Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioners Staff.
Erica Milo, Board Reporter.
Go ahead, Erica.
Good. Sure.
Erica Milo, Board Reporter.
And I see Julie Arena.
Yes, Julie Arena, Coordinator for the Hope Advisory Board.
And did I hear Scott Jackson?
You did. Sorry to have to have fun, everybody.
Okay. Good morning. And Lilia is also here in the boardroom. So we'll go ahead and keep moving here. Are there any announcements? Hearing comments from the public. And our agenda, if everybody doesn't have one, Danielle Brown is first, Brian Lee, and Dave Busby, if he's available. EOC update review, EOC financials, George Looney, and we will finish up with Kate Portia, economic development. So are there any questions about the agenda?
Commissioner Malone, I would like to check in and see if George Looney's on the phone at this point. George, are you out there? Lilia, would you contact him and make sure he gets on the line? I think the meeting's going to be fairly short this morning.
And it sounds like somebody may need to mute their device. So I think we're ready for you, Danielle.
Thanks, Commissioner. So just a quick update from what we talked about earlier this week. We have finalized the chance contract for the homeless hotel motel sheltering. That got completed Tuesday afternoon, so that process is moving forward. We also have placed our first two car and RV campers at the fairgrounds for homeless individuals. So we had a process in place, and some of that's still getting tweaked as we move along. But we have successfully placed our first two car campers there. The RVs that we are renting for the COVID-positive patients will be delivered today or tomorrow. So we will have COVID-positive alternate housing available after that. Also this morning, Commissioners, you would have received a document from Sarah Hartstein that is the Supports and Services for People Experiencing Homelessness. It is a short synopsis of everything the EOC has been working on regarding supporting homeless individuals in the community. This is just a snapshot. This is not all-inclusive, but we wanted to make sure that you guys had that documentation so you could see from a really high level what we've been working on for the last eight or nine weeks.
Zan?
I'd like to just jump in and say that the other intended audience for that document that was shared with you, with all of us this morning, is that we want to make sure that all of our Hope Advisory Board members are up to speed because there are just a handful that have been very involved in EOC operations, but many have been completely cut off from any information flow about what's happening to support homeless individuals. And we want to make sure that when we reconvene at some point in the future, that folks have some sense of what's been happening and so that we don't have such a big hurdle to climb over to the other end.
And I see that we have George Looney with us. And George, you are third on the agenda after Danielle Brown and Brian Lee.
Thank you.
Okay, Danielle?
Yeah, so a couple of other things. We have finished this week the mobile testing site planning. Ricky Garcia has worked really hard to get that completed with a lot of input from Dr. Christopher Radford and Kelly Howar and Dr. Bruce Thompson. So that has more or less been completed. The behavioral health plan, as I shared last week, has been completed, and the new services have been initiated. We have not yet received any referrals, but I do think as this becomes more public, we'll start to receive more referrals for our new skills training that we're offering to community members. So those are my updates for this morning, unless there are questions.
I've got one. We're almost a week into Phase One. What kind of metrics are we looking at? Can you give us a sense how you see Phase One playing out?
That's a great question. We have not seen quite yet, knock on wood, an increase in COVID cases. You know, the incubation period for COVID is up to 14 days, so we wouldn't expect that quite yet. The Downtown Business Association has had a couple of Zoom meetings yesterday to share some of the information that the EOC, specifically the Economic Recovery Group, is working on in order to help support the businesses that they reopen. I think that those pieces of information are being really well-received by the business associations and by the downtown business owners. Kate Portia will share with you, I'm sure, when she's on a little bit later this morning, about some literature that they are putting together to help provide some support for those business owners. I did participate in a Zoom call yesterday. There were some good questions around the governor's directed directions for Phase One. I think there's a fair amount of anxiety with reopening, but I think people are ready to come back to work and have some sort of normalcy back in their life. But I also am really happy with the outreach that business owners and community members are participating in in order to help manage the COVID emergency. I've been really impressed by all of the people I've seen wearing face masks and face coverings and the compliance with the governor's orders. So I think we're headed in the right direction. I think there's still a lot of support that needs to happen, but I think people are open and willing to participate in those conversations.
Great. Thank you. Anything else for Danielle?
Commissioners, I'd just like to mention that Charlie Fountain typically also gives an update. However, he has a state association meeting this morning and felt it was important for him to attend that. That's why he's not here this morning.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Danielle.
Thank you.
Brian Lee, you're up. Is your partner, Dave Busby, also going to report?
I don't believe so. I believe he is dealing with other tactical stuff here with Alcomer.
Great. Take it away, Brian.
All right. All righty. So I actually got a list here, so I will move through swiftly. The Economic Development Group and Operations Section completed this business guidance. We adapted it from some stuff Lane County put out and incorporated our own information. That should be going out today widely through the business sector. So we're going to push that out via email. We will have printed copies available if people need them. It'll be up on their website. We're getting it out as many avenues as possible. I believe it's like 30 or 40 pages, and step-by-step guidance and best practices and support and all that. So we're really happy about that. We're hopefully going to have it translated into Spanish by next week sometime for folks who might need it in Spanish. Otherwise, for the Phase One reopening update, I actually did a video yesterday on this. It's been relatively quiet. We are seeing businesses reopening but taking pretty good precautions to be safe and take care of their customers and their employees. There was, you know, a slight issue that came up with one, a couple businesses on day one, but they corrected it very quickly and got numerous calls and beat up pretty bad in social media. So what we're seeing is that mainly the community is regulating itself, which is really the preferred method here. With the Phase One reopening piece, other than just a couple of businesses that are compliant, there were complaints about the farmer's market. Charlie, Bill, Danielle, and all of us are engaged on that and making sure it gets corrected and getting real information and pictures and all that. But the main issue is with the little artisan market on private property right next to the farmer's market. So Farmer's Market's been, I guess, very good about fines and informing people as they come in, social distancing and vendors are doing a really good job. But it's hard to just battle the crowds of people that are naturally going to walk close to each other and all that. So they're doing the best they can, and I think they're going to step up their game even more just to be more diligent about artisan share beef they have no control over and since it's on private property, that's another hard teeth. So we'll see how Saturday goes, but we're going to kind of keep eyes on that moving forward. Other than that, for Phase One reopening, as Danielle mentioned, we haven't seen a huge uptick in cases. The few cases we did see, my understanding is we're having some challenges with contact tracing, and that's just the nature of the beast where some people don't want to report who they were in contact with or who they were with or anything like that. But my understanding is the CD team's working through that as efficiently as possible, and Lilia was working on some additional messaging to go out to help encourage folks basically to be more accepting of the contact tracing piece and that we're not using their information for anything malicious or anything like that. Some of the parameters to move into Phase Two, even though we haven't received much additional guidance on what Phase Two will look like or what sectors are being added or what the group sizes are going to be increased to. If we can't track 30% of our cases to a known positive, if we have an increase in cases or an increase in our ratio of testing to positives, which we are tracking every day, and then if we have an increase in hospital admissions, any of those could be something that prevents us from going into Phase Two. So far, we have not seen any of those metrics hit in Benton County. So we are still on track for Phase Two. And the earliest that we can, depending on the guidance and our application process, that we can enter Phase Two is June 5th, that's a Friday.
Brian, quickly. You went through those really, really fast.
Yes.
So the criteria are that if we can't track 30% or more of our content.
Yes.
I missed the second one completely. And the third one is increase of hospitalizations over some number.
A seven-day period. Yeah, over a seven-day period. The second one was an increase in cases, so specifically a 5% increase in cases, and it's kind of an and/or an increase in the ratio of positives per test fee.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's not only cases. Because we're obviously doing our trace study, so we will see more cases. So then they'll say, okay, well, how many, what's the ratio? Is the ratio increasing, or are you guys still doing a lot more tests and you're still getting similar number of positives? So we're tracking all of that information on a daily basis.
Good. So it's really looking at that prevalence in the community, that second measure.
Yes.
Okay.
Prevalence in the community and community spread, the first one. So that's really what they're looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so continuing down on the list, I forwarded this just to Danielle here just a minute ago before she got on the line. The Health Department asked that we apply for an extension for our non-congratulate housing piece, and that's mainly, not only for homeless, but it's actually also for isolation facilities if needed. So one of the governor's requirements for us to be in Phase One. So we forwarded that on to the state, and they sent it on the team I hear this morning. So I don't predict any issues there. I do want to touch on the funding piece. So Mary Ottley, Dan Parsons, and some other folks from finance, as well as George Looney, myself and Dave all sat on a, what's called a FEMA applicant briefing. So it's just a quick breakdown of what the FEMA reimbursement process looks like and how to apply. And it did talk about the CARES Act a lot as well. So the CARES funding will reimburse 100% and will cover pretty much everything we've spent money on, for lack of a better word. And we're mainly going after that funding, but we were also going to apply for FEMA reimbursement for anything not covered by CARES Act. So I just kind of wanted to give you guys the overview of that. And Mary is spearheading all of that, the reimbursement process and CARES Act funding application. So she's well aware of it and getting all those communications. And George will break down the financials for you here in a little bit and have a little more detail on the CARES and FEMA. For the, for folks who didn't hear, and this is tied to our EOC and our efforts moving forward, on that funding piece, the state budget was put out by the governor, and they are saying that we are going to be in recovery mode until 2025 financially. So it's just some impact to small businesses, et cetera. So we're going to start seeing more of those economic impacts here locally and that play out in health impacts and everything else. So we're just kind of transitioning to just a different phase in the emergency, but we're still very much in a level of emergency. As for some good news, the state is asking us to distribute PPE or help distribute PPE to local farm workers. So this is specifically farm workers, not food processors or canneries or anything else, but only farm workers. So we are helping with that next week. It's been a little bit chaotic and disorganized on how they communicated all this with us. But Lynn McKee came through and allowed us to use the fairgrounds, and OSU Extension is helping us and so is SERP, and we're going to get that out, at least initially, for pickup to farm workers, and then we're probably going to work out the delivery system moving forward if they need more. They weren't able to come during the hours that they're operating. So we're going to work that out, and Rocio is helping us along with Sarah Hartstein and Danielle to get a Spanish translator there. So we're just laying that groundwork here that was literally thrown on our plate at 4:30 yesterday, and we got a solution to it already here today. Other than that, the EOC, I want to give you an update on that because it relates to our EOC operations. To continue getting what's called EMPG or Emergency Management Performance Grant Funding, we have to have a compliant emergency operations plan. Dave Busby and I have been working on that over the last year. It seems like forever now, but a little less than a year. I would like to get a draft in front of you guys to adopt, no matter what, by August at the latest. I'd rather do it here in the next month or two. I'll just touch on one or two little points, and we can go through some other time, and I can sit with you guys individually and talk about all of it. But it does have a lot about the combined EOC pieces as well as EOC staffing. So I just wanted to mention that, and then moving forward, we'll all go into more detail here some other meeting. Staffing for the EOC, I wrote down a list, and I sent it to Matt Laurie, and I'll send it out to Joe as well. We have approximately 26 people in the EOC. Most of them are Health Departments. But they, I want to say 16 of them are Health Departments. The rest are either CCFO or EOC staff, and then there's a couple Public Works, Parks, and Community Development in here as well. And I can send that breakdown to you guys, you can see what that looks like. There are currently six big employees, and the rest are counties. So we're pretty minimally staffed. There's a few positions we could maybe go virtual here after Phase Two, but other than that, we want to keep the CFC operation at least in a low hum. And definitely having the JCPio group involved, emergency management and the Health Department constantly working as we progress forward. And obviously, my concern about demobilizing is bringing something up if we have a huge outbreak or something else happens. So we're looking at all that. I'm talking to Joe, Matt Laurie, and everyone else about their staffing models and what we're looking at here moving forward. We'll keep you updated on that. And then my last thing here, can't believe I got sent into my list, is the EOC location. Moving into the fall, if we have to deal with COVID-specific emergencies, I know Pfizer will probably be under construction. We obviously have the law enforcement center in our EOC, but it's pretty small to be able to run this level of operation. So we're talking about how we could do this virtually, and there's a lot of heartburn amongst everybody about how this would look virtual, since we all know it honestly won't work well. So we're trying to figure out what that looks like in another location. So we thought about the fair auditorium, but we don't know what construction's going on there. So just keep that in your guys' mind. If there's a location we could use, maybe even a gymnasium or something we could use that would provide plenty of space so we could set up tables, space out, provide social distancing, and have everything still operate, that's kind of what we're thinking about as a backup in the fall if we have another emergency out of this COVID-19 stuff. So just kind of wanted to give you guys that little primer on it, and I will take any other questions that are out there.
I have a question for both you and Danielle. I think it was Monday, and the Baker Circuit Judge saying the governor's orders were null and void, and so for a few hours Monday afternoon, there was some confusion. Did that have any effect on your operation?
It did not, other than a lot of chuckles and kind of like, what does that mean for us? Danielle might have had some more impact, but I know on our end in the EOC, it didn't. And I think on social media, they got a little bit of, you know, comments on employees' activity, but other than that, it's been relatively quiet here in Benton County in terms of people suddenly opening their doors and not caring. Like I said, from what I've seen so far, the community has really taken it seriously, and there really are opening cautiously. Like businesses are getting back open, but they are taking the measures seriously, and they are trying to be careful. No one wants to be that hotspot where everyone, all their customers got infected or all the employees got infected. No one wants to know what's your visit. People want to be safe. So we've seen people be more responsible than anything else. Maybe Danielle has another comment.
Yeah, no, Brian, I would agree with you. I think that that didn't have any impact on the reopening plans locally or what people are participating in. I think there's one-off individuals who use this as background for their thought process and feeling like that they didn't need to follow rules, but generally, I don't think it had any impact on anything that's happening here.
Any questions for Brian or Danielle? Annabelle, did you have anything?
No, Pat, I'm fine.
Okay. Well, then we'll keep talking about the money part of this and our weekly EOC financial review. You're up, George.
Okay, and I apologize for being late. As Danielle mentioned, the RVs are getting, we're getting things set up for the fairgrounds, and there was one little issue in that they don't have sewer service. And so I was actually right in the middle of sending some emails so that we're going to be able to provide some sewer services for those and lost track of time. But, so, financials. The first thing I guess I'm going to say with the financials is I think that these have kind of taken on a little bit of a different life, especially in the last week, maybe the last two weeks, than what they originally started with. And I think the original intent was to keep track of what our FEMA expenses were going to be and how we were going to get reimbursed. With the CARES Act, that has really changed a lot of things. And as Brian mentioned, FEMA has some very specific requirements. First of all, of course, the biggest one is a 25% match, and then what is allowable and what's not allowable. Where the CARES Act money does not have a match and is much more lenient on what they're, the reimbursement that they're allowing. So I know we had conversations with Mary and with her group that we're really focusing on the CARES Act. And the CARES Act for the first funding portion needs to be submitted by tomorrow, and her group is working on that very diligently and accumulating all that information from the EOC and from all the other departments. So we'll have a much better idea on that. But you're going to see some things on the financial report that look kind of out of whack for this last week, and it's because we've really kind of shifted that towards including costs that would be included in the CARES Act. So the very first thing that I look at is, of course, we've had a big jump in our costs, and I'll come back to why that is. We're at $1.8 million. Again, the majority of that is personnel. On the first sheet, on the total cost sheet, the county has had another payroll go through, so you're seeing updated information through May 15th there. Our estimates and our actuals are starting to kind of spread a little bit, but I don't think there's anything really as a big concern there. As we move to the graph, and this is the first one that looks really odd, is when we see that 511 to 515 for the county, it's way out there. It's over $160,000, $173,000, I think, actually, for this last week. Part of that is we did have the payroll that got reconciled, so that has increased that just like the city did back in the 420, 424 time period. But the other part that really is playing a big factor in this is we picked up $60,000 in laptops that were purchased by IT that, for FEMA, would not have been reimbursable, but under the CARES Act, they will be reimbursable. So those have gotten included into this week's report. So that's a large reason of why that looks so strange and so high at this point. And with that, I would jump to the over 3K and 10K because there's a couple of things that have gotten added in here, and I just want to make sure that folks are aware of those, and that the Commissioners and as well as Joe are aware of those. And that is the $60,000 for the Dell laptops. Those were not processed through the EOC, so they didn't go through the approval process that most of these other large purchases were through the sheriff or the undersheriff. The other is the $12,000 that's listed on there, and that expense has not been incurred. That's the expense that Danielle was talking about for the RVs, for the self-out, for the isolation. I wanted that in there really just as a placeholder. That, we will see that payment. It's going to come. I believe that the payment will actually be made to the vendor tomorrow. That list's working on that and getting a check secured for them. But it really, again, did not go through the EOC. That is a Health Department contract that's being ramped. But it is a part of this event, so I've listed it on there. It doesn't really fall under the 3K a day, but it does certainly, it's going to be over the 10K. So it's more for information so that everybody is kind of up on what's going on. The other part that I would like them to kind of maybe address is, as I was putting this together yesterday, the personnel numbers for the last week, for the county especially, have jumped up. And I am going to spend some time over the next week doing an analysis of that. I believe it is correct, and it's exactly what Brian just said. We're seeing folks within the EOC, we're seeing fewer and fewer folks here, but we're seeing more people involved in this activity, especially within the Health Department outside the EOC. So we're seeing more hours being coded to the project, but not necessarily in the EOC environment. But I think that there's some more information that I can provide. I just was not able to get to it last night to get the report to you on a timely basis. So I'm hoping to have that maybe broken out by week for next week's presentation so that we'll be able to kind of see what's going on and you'll be able to understand where those dollars are. Of course, what we do know is both the CARES Act and FEMA are not going to reimburse us for the majority of those personnel costs, if any. So we do know it will reimburse us for all the time, but beyond that, we don't, we're not sure. Yeah, Zan?
My understanding is that there is a lot of money for both the testing and contact tracing functions, however, so all of those Health Department employees that are involved in those activities will be covered up.
That is true. And also, I've had conversations with Don specifically, but we also are thinking that some of these numbers we're reporting could be underreported because they may be expenses that are in the Health Department that are part of their operations but may be geared towards COVID-19 but aren't specifically accounted that way. But we also know that as we look at the funding sources that we saw in that graph last week, they also have a fair amount of money that's coming in that's covering those, too. So there's kind of a little bit of a wash in that part, too. But yes, you're exactly right. The testing, the contact tracing, those are things that we may be able to get some reimbursement for. That is pretty much the presentation that I had. I would welcome any other questions.
George, this is Danielle. Can I jump in?
Absolutely.
Just a point of clarification, there is money coming to public health through one of our service elements for contact tracing and COVID-19 testing that is not a reimbursement. It is through our IGA with Oregon Health Authority. Additionally, the community health centers have received some personal funding for additional testing. So we're trying to develop, we're in the process of developing a plan to utilize those resources. those resources most effectively in collaboration between the health department and the health center and figuring out who and how those, those monies and services will be provided. So that's an ongoing process and plan. There is dollars that we have received or will be receiving in the very near future. And what we're trying to do is really use those as wisely and as widely as we can.
Very good.
Thank you.
Joe?
Danielle, can you speak to the $12,000 for the RVs? And what period of time is that $12,000 covering?
Yeah, good question, Joe. So the $12,000 is for three recreational vehicles for a 30-day period to be placed at the fairgrounds for COVID-positive patients for isolation. Lynn McKee, again, I've said this a couple of times, she is a saint and an angel, did, did an informal bid process for the EOC, reached out to multiple providers for RV rentals and found that this was the company that was one, the least expensive and two, the most willing to provide their recreational vehicles for this use. So that is specifically for the rental of those RVs. There will be additional as needed for the servicing related to the sewer.
What process is in place to review that expense on a regular basis? If, say for example, we're not utilizing those over time, what are we going to reevaluate and to minimize expense if they're not being used?
Yeah, so those, those are things we're looking at on an ongoing basis. Because the reimbursement from FEMA is on 30-day timelines, we essentially only have the reimbursement approval for, for each 30 days, for 30 days at a time. So we'll continue to assess the, the utilization and need for those at the very least about every 20 to 22 days as we're requesting additional resource, reimbursement from FEMA for those resources. So those are, those are ongoing resource that we're, that we're checking in on as we're using those or not using them. So if we find in, in two weeks that we're not using them, we'll likely return them or have them picked back up. But I do think we'll use them, I, I do think we'll use them as we have COVID-positive patients that can't isolate.
Thank you.
And to make those, to make those accessible for handicapped individuals, Sarah Hartstein has, is going to be working to, to make one of the, one of the disabilities accessible by providing a ramp or some other sort of access point into the RV, once we look at the RVs and see what they are and what we can do to, to manage that.
Thank you. Zan?
I have another question that's not related to the, that helps spending directly, but to the JIC. Looking at that 3,000, over 3,000, over 10,000 list of expenditures, one of the expenditures is for the mailing that went to Benton County residents. And if the way it's stated here is that it went to all property owners, is that the way, is that mailing list that we ended up using? And how are we going to reach folks that are renters, if that's the case?
Zan, this is Lilia. So the method that we utilized is EDDM. It's every door direct method. So property owners is a misnomer. It is anyone with a post box.
And I will correct that on the spreadsheet.
Thank you. I, I didn't think it was just property owners. So thank you.
Well, my favorite tab, George's Grants. Do you have any updates on what's going on in that arena?
I don't have any updates, anything additional. I think we'll have a better idea. I don't know that we'll hear next week, but once the submissions are in for the CARES Act on Friday, we're going to start to see, have a better idea of what our reimbursement's going to be from that. Honestly, I, I don't think it's going to be huge. I think that the, it depends on that personnel piece and on how that's handled. But looking at materials and expenses, we're in the quarter million dollar range between us and the city. And if we look at that, about 160,000 of that is laptops. So Dave Busby and Brian and I actually had a conversation earlier this week about all the work that has gotten done here and how little really material and supplies has happened. I mean, it's, it's personnel that's really done an amazing amount of job with not a whole lot of expense. So, but I think we'll have a better feel. When I talked to Mary yesterday about the CARES Act, and she made a comment about if we were going to get that. And we don't know, we don't know what other counties are going to submit. I know she mentioned that there was a county who built, who bought a building and they're going to submit that under the CARES Act. That seems interesting, but who knows what's going to happen? We, we do know that Multnomah, Washington, and the city of Portland are excluded from this, so they already have their money. So those are, are big areas that we won't be competing with. But the rest of the state, we will and, and how that's allocated. I know what I've read, they, they think that they've allocated 200 million for this portion, but they think they're going to get less than 50 million in requests. We have no idea. So, so long-winded answer to say, no update at this point, but hopefully either next week or the week after, we'll know about the CARES money and that we will have enough paid.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else for George? Well, I appreciate the, everybody keeping track and, and nobody knows what's, what money is really coming and what, what act and when. But the, I guess the basic message is keep track and, and figure out how to, which pot of money to try to access. So.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Efforts. Next up is Kate Porche and the economic development piece. So Kate?
Thank you, Commissioner Malone. Appreciate it. I appreciate the time. Let me get my notes up here. I have just a handful of updates for you and one item that I was hoping to receive some direction on. So first up, I wanted to give you guys an update with the results of the Benton County loan program. I am, again, continually just grateful for the contribution that, that you all made to Benton County businesses. And we just really, really appreciate that. I apologize. Hang on, I'm getting my notes up here. Okay. So I wanted to give you a breakdown. And in the end, we had the loan program open for a while. And as you recall, we did this on a lottery-based system. We had, in all in all, we were able to make 12 loans to businesses in Benton County. The amount totaled $105,000 in loans that were made. So there is a bit of a surplus here, and that's one of the things that I wanted to talk to you guys about. The breakdown, though, is what I thought was just really heartening and I think really gets to the goals that you all had as policymakers. Four of the applicants and who received the loans are minority-owned businesses totaling about $30,000 in funding. So it's about 33% of the applicants or 29% of the dollar volume that you were able to get out the door to minority-owned businesses. Three of the applications are rural in the amount of $25,000. So that's a quarter of the application. And just under that by the, by the dollar amount, but we were able to support two businesses in Toloma and one in Monroe. So again, a really nice dispersion of the funds to the different areas that we know were priorities for you. In terms of business size, the businesses range in, from anything from full proprietors to, up to 22 employees. So a nice range in business size. Just a really good mix. So that's kind of a breakdown on the loans and the funding that you were able to get out the door. Let me just pause there really quickly to see if you have any questions on that before I move on to my other couple of items.
Well, that's great news and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of designing the program so that the money gets spread around to all of the county and minority businesses. So because no employee, no loan went to anybody over 25 employees, is there, does that mean the, the state match is in play?
Yes, so that, that was the next thing that I wanted to talk to you. So thank you, thank you for that softball with a great, with a great segue on Commissioner Malone. So I did want to let you know that of the, of the 105,000 in loans that we've made, 30,000 of that amount are, is eligible to count as a match for the Business Oregon grant application. Now, interestingly enough, it wasn't the number of employees that was the problem. In fact, everybody who applied had fewer than 25 employees, as it turned out. What was the problem is the Business Oregon guidelines, revised guidelines that they sent out required that none of the folks that can be eligible for their program or for the matching dollars can have received either the Payroll Protection Program, the PPP, or the IDOL. And that was really the ones that caught us up. So unfortunately, only 30, only 30,000 in hand, it was three, three of the loans that Benton County made are going to be eligible to count as a match, which was $30,000. Now, here's the good news. Because we hadn't expended all the funds, we were able to use the remaining $55,000 in that fund and count that as a match. So ultimately, and this was my second update, ultimately, we were able to put together a really nice application. We ended up doing a joint application between Benton County and the city of Albany. We had heard from folks that these sort of combined regional applications tend to score higher. We felt it was beneficial to everybody. And Albany was going to use exactly the same rollout that we had planned to use. They were also going to use community lending work as a partner. So it was one of these where it just made perfect sense to combine efforts and do it as a coordinated act. So the application that went, went in, Albany had 200,000 in match and Benton County had 85,000 in match. And so we requested 100% of that coming back. Now, I will tell you, in my conversations with the folks at Business Oregon, what we're hearing is that they anticipate anywhere from three to five times the amount of assets compared to what they have funding for. So I did want to let you know, we have, you know, as I tended to do as a long time ago real estate agent, we've, we've put in writing expectations with city of Albany that should, should the amount of money coming in from Business Oregon be less than a 100% match, we will disperse those funds on a proportionate basis between Benton County and Albany to make it equitable and get those out. But that application went out Monday. Jerry Storbe from our team did amazing work with stuff. It was just everybody coming together at the last moment. Community lending work swooping in with all the data and information that we needed from, from our loan program. So it was, it was really a joint effort and we're, we're grateful to the partners. So now we're just in a holding pattern. I will say, in terms of timing, you know, it's kind of like, okay, when do we find out? What, what we had heard previously is that Business Oregon's goal was to get this money on the ground by the end of the month. So if that is still their goal, our expectation is that they'll be communicating back with, with the applicants of the RFP process in the very near future so that we can get this going. And again, as a reminder, I think you guys know, but for anybody who's listening, these funds will be slightly different. These will be grant funds rather than a loan. There is a strong focus on minority-owned and rural businesses as well as a very strong focus on full proprietors. So there's going to be targets and goals that statewide in terms of rolling, rolling funds out to, to those types of businesses. But I think, you know, with, with the work that we've been able to do jointly here through the EOC, you know, Kathy, I think you guys know Catherine on our team speaks Spanish. She's been looking with Oceo, getting out, communicating with our Latinx-owned businesses and minority businesses, that we've got a really excellent track record of producing materials in other languages and, and making sure that businesses of all types in Benton County are, are hearing about these and applying for them and receiving these questions. So again, I'll be happy to pause there and answer any questions about the Business Oregon grant application.
You mentioned if the dollars come in are less than 100% matched, that it's proportional. So I was trying to do this in my head. So, so we've asked for $280,000 if we, what happens if it comes in, we get $100,000. What's the split between Benton County and Albany?
Yeah, that's a good question. So it's, so I'm looking here, so the total loss is 285. Of that, your portion is 85,000, so that's 29.8% of the request. So if 100,000 comes back, then we'd have $29,824 to put out, roughly.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. You bet, you bet, yeah. Yeah, we just felt like that was a fair enough little way to, to do that. Any other questions on the grant?
Doesn't sound like it.
Okay, thank you. And so I did want to transition quickly to the policy question that I have, and then I'll close out with a couple of updates real quickly for you guys. The question that I did have for you was about the remaining funds. So as indicated, there is $55,000 remaining in this fund. And we've got a couple of options about how we step forward. One, you could continue to handle one-off applications for the loan program as we structured it now. We could continue to advertise that there's still dollars in that pot and just have community lending work continue to, to fund those and roll those out. So that's, that's one option. The second option, of course, you, we could have community lending work hold those back for some sort of future program that you think might be needed. Or the third option, which community lending work suggested, and I think could make a lot of sense, is that when and if we hear back that we have received some funds for the Business Oregon grant, community lending works, again, will be our partner rolling out those grant funds. And Emily Reiman, the CEO, her idea was, is that we roll out and, and say, hey, we've got these grant funds, isn't this great? And oh, by the way, if you still need more than just the grants, we also have this loan fund as, as a backup and available to you. To me, I think that third option makes the most sense. I think it would be a really nice, we'll be already doing all the, the advertising and the media push on the grant, and then it will be a nice, hey, we've got these grants and then we have loan funds available. I think in that regard, the notion would be that we would then target the remaining loan fund to the same audience that the grant funds are targeted at. So I, I want to be transparent and let you know that that would be slightly a shift because now we're going to be down a little more specific, 25 or fewer employees, a real focus on full proprietors, haven't received federal PPP or IDOL funds. But again, if we don't get enough applicants, we can just come back and, and roll it out some other way. But I, I wanted to, to outline these three options for you.
Okay. Zan?
Do we have, my sense is that we almost have to do it in that option three way if we are truly going to lever the Business Oregon money. So.
It is true. The exception is, so to pass the point, if we only get $29,000 that comes in, we have been told that what we want to do is before we sign any contracts with Business Oregon, we say, okay, no fines, and you gave us 29,000. Therefore, we agreed to commit 29,000 as match, which to that point, Zan, would already be the two loans that you had made, which frees up your other funds to be more flexible should you choose. So you will have some flexibility there. As, you know, in some ways, I, I would say perhaps this is not a decision that needs to be made. As, you know, in some ways, I would say perhaps this is not a decision that needs to be made on this day and that perhaps understanding the exact amount that we hopefully do get from Business Oregon for the grant will help you frame that discussion a little bit better.
Okay. I like, I like holding the dollars in reserve to see what Business Oregon does on their end and that, I think, rolling into that third option today makes sense. But I like having, getting a little more information and the need's going to be there next week, next month, kind of timetable. So let our Business Oregon partners tell us what they're, what they're doing and then that makes it easier for us to move forward.
Totally understood. And so I, of course, have this note, but as soon as we hear back, I'll make sure to jump back into the hold with you guys and get on one of these calls so we can outline and really have you make a, make a good decision with all the data and final numbers available to you. That sounds perfect. And funny, to your point, Commissioner Malone, about the need going forward, I apologize for a little late jumping on this call. I don't know if you guys have discussed some of the economic impact yet. I'm certain you've all been reading the news and watching. I know OPB carried a story on this this morning. But I do have a couple graphs from the state, what is the economist that I subscribe to. And Commissioner Ojero knows, because I certainly, I shared these with her and I'd be happy to email them to everybody, but it's startling. So a couple things, just, you know, some graphic representation of where we're at. The unemployment numbers came out yesterday for the state and, you know, we are officially in a recession. When you compare it to other recessions over time, it's really staggering to see this graph where, you know, the other recessions, you can see them going down, down, down. And this one, of course, is that straight spike down. The part though that was maybe not, maybe not surprising, but still disheartening, was their prediction about what it's going to look like coming back up. And as you may have heard, they are predicting a, that it won't be until 2024, second quarter of 2024, that we're back into a pre-COVID-19 type of economy, which I think maybe is a slower, a slower trajectory back up than folks had thought or hoped for. And again, it is a prediction, it's possible that things will go faster, but I just, I want to make sure you guys were aware of those numbers and I'll be happy to send the two graphs and emails that I'm talking about on to you.
Right.
So I did not want to finish with that bad news. So let me, let me transition to my final update, which I think is maybe some good news. We continue, and I know Brian said, we continue to just do amazing work here through the EFC. I know you guys know, you've got great people here, many from the county, some from the city, all smart, working hard, doing great stuff. I just think we need to be really honored to be a part of this team. In terms of economic recovery efforts, one, we, we've been kind of, I call it the dog and pony show circuit. I don't mean it in a belittling way, but we've been really trying to hit every, every chamber meeting. I was on DCA this morning, I was on the chamber. Commissioner Ojero and I were on the Corvallis Advocate Panel that they had this week. Yesterday, we did a Let's Keep Connected. Patrick Collins, the city's PIO moderator, and Bill Eminger from Environmental Health and I were on. It was awesome. We had really good questions from businesses that Bill was able to answer. I think it was incredibly helpful. We have continued, and I know you all know, but we have continued to just beat the drum of responsible reopening, reopening when you're ready, you know, have the policies, have the procedures that you need. If you're not clear what those are, use the email address that the JIC helped us set up, use the call center line, right? And to that end, we're really focused on getting information out to our businesses. So we, our friends down in Lane County very generously gave to us the design files for a very attractive, like I've got it right here, because I'm just editing it, but a very attractive Back-to-Business Guide. We were able to take this and shift it to be Benton County instead of Lane County throughout the document. And we also made some changes too, to update with some Benton County specific items. It is basically the same information that, that is coming out through the state. We're not putting in any new information, we're literally copying and pasting. But it's set up in a, and I'll show you, it's set up in a really attractive way where it's got these, you know, just nice icons and information in it. It's easy to read, there's sections for the restaurant sector, for the personal services sector, and it's a PDF, so in it are contained links that they can go to and they see the information and they can click through and get to the really detailed information. Thanks to a super collaborative effort and the graphic designer that the library lent us, these are going to be ready to roll out today. And what we're doing is we're emailing this to every business in Benton County for whom we have an email address. Really excited about this as step one. Step two, though, is we have the certainly aggressive goal, but our goal is to then follow this up with a phone call to every business in Benton County. And so we, we aren't just doing this ourselves, it's a team effort. So our first phase of that is that we're calling on our partner organizations. First phase is we're going to have our membership organizations, the Corvallis and Baloise Chambers, Downtown Corvallis, Business Station of Monroe, Visit Corvallis, call everybody in their phone list. And it's really easy, this is a quick touch base, like, how are you doing with reopening? Do you need further information? Have you seen the new, the new guide, basically? If they're needing further information, we're going to capture that and we're going to get that up and out to the people who can help these businesses. From there, phase two then, we'll have our other partners such as Sustainability Coalition, the SDC, Foundry, Rain, calling their businesses. And of course, behind the scenes, we're going to be very thoughtful about this and track all of it in a spreadsheet so that we can ensure that the same business isn't being called multiple times, that it's just a one-touch friendly, friendly interaction. So again, the Business Guide will be going out this week. We're going to begin the phone call for it and check-in next week. And we also have another plan. We've actually are putting together a list, one, thanks in large part to the Assessors' Office for letting us know the businesses through, that pay the personal property tax, that was quite a few of them, through the Secretary of State. So we're really working on this single source entire list of businesses in Benton County. There will be some that we're not able to reach, we may either end up mailing them. And there's also some talk of having somebody just go out to the really rural areas if there was some hope to weren't able to reach and maybe, you know, Commissioner Ojero, you know, has mentioned that, you know, the little store out in Alfi, we may just send somebody out there to deliver these. And again, just to have a single touch point, a human being that we can make sure that they're doing okay. So that's our plan with that, we're pretty excited. And the last idea that was brought up, we thought it was a great one, Bill Eminger brought this up yesterday after we did the Let's Keep Connected, is we are going to do some Let's Keep Connected online business forums that are sector-specific. And so we'll bring in our partners from Public Health, have them to do one for restaurants. We're going to do one for personal services and then have questions come in that they can answer related to those. We're also going to work on some short little quick videos that we can post, push them out through social media for the folks in those different sectors. All of this, we're working to continue to keep our JIC informed to the work that we're doing and so that we're coordinating efforts. And we're also working on translating the Back-to-Business Guide into Spanish as well. So I didn't want you to think that we've forgotten about that. But again, we're just all hands on deck, getting businesses the information they need, getting them to update as information becomes available to us. So happy to pause there and answer any questions.
Well, I really appreciate the active outreach. I mean, it's one thing to have the links and have the materials, but making sure that they're getting, doing all you can to get that information out where it's needed. And because some business owners are pretty savvy, they can go through the online maze and do pretty, pretty well, but others, not so much. So that's really impressive and thinking about the, how long it will take us to recover since we don't know what next week looks like or next month, I think that's pretty pessimistic. Might be realistic, but to say, oh, four or five years from now we'll be back, hopefully it will be quite a bit shorter than that. But stay tuned.
Yeah. And if nothing else, know that we're watching it very closely and monitoring it. And if any of you are policymakers, or Joe, or Mary, if you want more information, let us know because we look at the stuff, we read it, and we're happy to share with you what we know and what we think is up there.
Well, and the other part of that is, the important part is if we do a good job opening up, being careful, physical distancing, masks, we can have an effect on how long it takes to get back to something resembling normal. I mean, we, we're not passive in this operation and I think the voluntary cooperation that we've had to date is, in this county, is impressive. And if we keep it up, we can shorten that long recovery, I think, by quite a bit. But part of the message should be, it's up to us.
Yeah, it absolutely is.
Suzanne?
I have just a quick follow-up question. It sounds to me as though through all of this contact and collaboration with our economic development partners and chambers, et cetera, that we are actually going to have a much more robust list of Benton County businesses than we've ever had before. And I'm happy about that because I think it means we can work more effectively together than we have been able to in the past. The other question I have is that I'm seeing signs that there actually are, even in this environment, some businesses opening their doors. And I was wondering how we are going to be able to track some of that activity and celebrate it? And also whether we, on the converse side, are already hearing about some businesses that are, are holding up shop and be able to just keep, keep a finger on the pulse for that?
Yeah, it's a, it's a really good question, Commissioner Ojero. I think in terms of tracking, we continue to, as you, you may recall, it seems like so long ago, but we had put together that spreadsheet where we were tracking businesses in Benton County who were either scaling back their hours or if they were doing takeouts, we're using that same form and format to track those who are reopening different services that they're offering, things that they're doing. So that, that's at least for us right now, the channel through which we're looking to track those items. In terms of the celebration, I know you guys, you mentioned this, the idea came up yesterday, and I think it's a good one, of going out and shooting some quick videos, going to some places that are, that are doing it right, that have come up with innovative ideas. I know one restaurant plans to use like a waitlist app for your phone. So even if the whole restaurant is totally empty, you've got to log in through the waitlist app so that they know who you're there with, who was in the party, so, and that they've got that then later for the contact tracing. What we'd like to do though is shoot a couple of these, like, you know, clever ideas, the ways, you know, highlight the ways businesses have been adapting. One, make sure that we're going all throughout the county to do this. I don't, you know, don't want your, it's to be a Corvallis-centric thing. And two, inviting other folks who may have these same great ideas to, to let us know and that we'll come out and shoot a quick video out of their place, too. I think the more businesses can share these best practices and that, to your point, Suzanne, that we can celebrate the ingenuity and the innovation of the people and businesses in Benton County, this is a really, really good time to do that.
Anything else, Kate, that you wanted to go over?
Um, no, and I, you know, it's funny, I don't, I apologize, I don't know if Lily or Brian mentioned it, but one thing that, that was of interest to me too, that is not in my daily life, but it's also like the messaging related to the contact tracing and making sure, I know the JIC is working on this, but basically like, hey, you've got a call from Public Health, return the call, call us back because if we can't stay up with the, with the contact tracing, you know, it's just such an integral and important part of continuing to be able to stay open. And again, I know Stat Product's in great hands, but it's one that really did resonate with me as well in terms of, of keeping safe and keeping our businesses open. But yeah, that's it for me today.
Great. Any other questions or comments for Kate? Annabelle, did you have anything?
I would not use, no, I don't have anything.
Okay. Well, great report, Kate, and the efforts are impressive. I mean, that's, like I was saying, I think if we're smart and figure out best practices in this new environment, we can, we can prove the state economist's long-term forecast is, was way too pessimistic, but we will see.
That is, that is my goal. That is my goal, to be in front of our, our chambers of commerce or at a, at a dog and pony presentation in the future where we're going to show that graph and what they thought it was going to be and what we were actually able to make it be in Benton County, indeed.
Ah ha, you were wrong.
Exactly.
All right. Moving on, I think we're to other, Vance has been unusually quiet this morning. Do you have anything for us?
I've got nothing. I sent a slew of emails out to all of you yesterday, so you are at least electronically apprised of what's going on. I think the takeaway is on a couple of your service district agendas for June 16th, you'll have something more than just your budget to adopt. But like I said, you've got everything electronically via email that I had to say.
Okay. You, I think it was yesterday, you sent out a revised contract for Republic. What, how do you want to get feedback for that?
You can send it back to me electronically would be great. If you have any comments within the document, you can insert those electronically as well. So, and my objective would be to take all of the comments and compile them and hopefully get, we will talk about this on Wednesday at our, at the executive session. So that's the objective, to have your feedback in time for me to synthesize it for Wednesday's meeting.
And then have it finalized by the end of the month.
Right, we want to, we want to get it to Republic by the end of the month.
Okay. So that's, that's soon. So take a look at the contract and see if you want to do any changes or additions. The clock is ticking.
Yes, it is.
I guess it's always ticking.
In one sense or another, yes.
One other item, and Annabelle, this might be in your realm, Susan Morgan's emails about the Federal Lands Committee disbanding. Benton County does not have a, much of a say in that, but did you have any comments, Annabelle? Benton County does not have much of a say in that, but did you have any comments, Annabelle? Hit the button, Annabelle.
Sorry, I, I, hey, my phone is way across the desk over here, so I can't see the light.
I can't see the light. Please, somebody record that.
Well, I can't, there's a button, there's a light on the button, and I can't see it. But I can't, shut up, Vance.
Record that, too.
You know, one of the things I was going to steal with, what I was saying was, most of the focus has been on east side forests. There's been very little focus on west side forests, mainly the Cayus paw and into the north of us. And the east side forest stuff is really kind of tied into some of the southwestern forests. So there just hasn't been a lot of conversation around anything that's happening up in this neck of the woods. And so I, and it's mostly, I don't know about what you think, but most of the meetings are really focused on complaining about working with the federal government. So I can see Susan stating them not productive. The other thing is if they were going to do them again, I think seven o'clock in the morning on a Monday morning is really poor timing for a real beneficial conversation. I recognize that they have it prior to the Natural Resources or National Lands Committee, that, you know, it's just kind of, they both, they both swap into each other. So I think that that makes sense, if the band doesn't think of a new model.
Okay. Suzanne?
I would agree, and I think that one of, actually, the biggest issue is just that there was no consensus about a federal lobbyist hired in Washington DC, and that's a really expensive cost. And I think a lot of counties right now are looking at that and thinking, hmm, it's just not worth it. And a lot of the counties that really have a lot at stake either have their own lobbyists or they're doing their own direct lobbying, flying out to DC, the commissioners are themselves. So that's what I see as one of the biggest drivers, as well as the time sink.
Yeah, I think that's true, and the fact that they can't seem to hang on to the lobbyists is another problem. I think the county commissioners that really have these concerns are better lobbyists themselves. I think the lobbyists that were hired were supposed to help several states, and I don't really have a sense of how that was going with other states at all.
So do we need to do anything, or just let this?
I can send Susan back a message and say, you know, we're fine with the disbanding of the committee, if that's okay with you guys.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine by me, and you're a voting member, I believe.
Yeah. Right, and I, I can do that. And I think that, I forget how much, what our dollar type was, but I know it's becoming a hard pick for some of the other counties.
$250, if you're talking about the annual dues.
Yeah, on annual dues.
And so I forget, Lane County was a couple thousand dollars a year, got into serious money, and even before the coronavirus business, I think that effort was winding down, and this, I think, is pretty much taken care of it. Okay, well, that solves that one. Do we have any other? So our next meeting is Tuesday, if I get it right, month, the 26th. Monday's a holiday, so enjoy the weekend, and...
I'm good.
Commissioner Malone, touch on the location of the meeting next week, if you want.
Okay. And next Tuesday, we will be meeting at the Sunset Building, main meeting room. So change of venue, and I think the idea is to continue meeting there.
With the exception, with the exception of Wednesday's meeting with me in the exec session, which will be here in the regular board office.
Okay.
Okay.
But available go-to meeting?
Not go-to, telephone, telephone.
Okay.
If any of three commissioners or Joe wish to attend via telephone, that's perfectly acceptable under the public meeting laws. We are not doing a go-to meeting for that meeting, though.
Okay.
I'm assuming that that room can be arranged appropriately for that meeting?
Yes, yes. Lilia has assured me that she's got a tape measure, and that you will be six feet away from everybody.
Hi, Commissioner. Hi, Commissioner Harameo, this is Lilia. Excuse me. Oh, oh, excuse me. Sorry, we had a little bit of a crash over here. My apologies. It was definitely me. So tomorrow, I'll be headed back here to the board's office to assist with breaking down the current setup for our move out to the Sunset facility for Tuesday morning's meeting. And I will set up this boardroom tomorrow, once we have the equipment removed, to host Vance's meeting here downtown Wednesday morning. So there will not be any video equipment in the room, and I will arrange for six spaces. Teresa will be the staff person in the office on Wednesday, which aligns very well with Vance's meeting. So it will be, my understanding is the three commissioners, Joe, Vance, and Teresa on Wednesday here in the boardroom. On Tuesday morning out at Sunset, it will be, in terms of in addition to the commissioners, it will be Joe, Vance, myself, Alyssa Rash, and Erica Milo, and Teresa will be attending virtually.
Okay.
And that's at nine o'clock on Wednesday with Vance?
I'm unsure when Vance's meeting is, but on Tuesday it's at nine AM.
Wait a second, let me look. You had to ask something I didn't know, right off the top of my head.
I thought that was a good way to end the meeting, Vance. Looks like it's at nine o'clock.
Is it at nine?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Joe?
Commissioners, just a reminder that county facilities will reopen to the public next Tuesday morning, May 26th. We will have limited staffing in order to continue to honor the physical distancing, but there's been a lot of work over the last couple of weeks preparing for reopening our facilities to the public, and I just wanted to remind you that that was occurring on Tuesday.
And the other thing about Tuesday is, one of the main agenda items is our conversation with Senator Kelsner and Representative Ray Field to get their perspective on what the state budget and any other issues that we would like to discuss with them.
I think that would have been both confirmed.
Great.
And they're going to be live?
No, virtual.
Virtual, okay, that was my question, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? We'll have a great weekend, and see you Tuesday.